Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to America, the republic which spans one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody please stay standing.
I have a moment of silence for Officer Steve Dannon, Sean Dannon, I'm sorry, who lost his life in the line of duty in Yarmouth. He was a CUNY service officer, I believe, in 2005. Our prayers go out to his family and friends.
Thank you. Okay, is this on? Can you guys hear me off? How's that? Oh. Okay, we call to order the April 18, 2018 Select Board meeting. No changes to the agenda that I know of, so we can accept the agenda, everybody's fine with that. Announcements, Libby?
Other than this meeting is being video and audio recorded, we do have 2018 Committee Board and Commission vacancies that are being advertised right now. There is a lot of information online about what is open. We encourage people to take a look and apply. The Board will be making its final appointments on June 27th. There are a couple of public hearings in between now and then, and some application deadlines, all of which is in this document, which can be found online.
Thank you, Libby. Is there any public comment here tonight on any items or issues that are not on the agenda? Okay, see, none. Any new business, none that I know of? Okay, we've got approval minutes, warrants, pending contracts. Motion to approve minutes of April 11th. And April, two meetings, at the 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. meeting. So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve payroll warrants for weeks April 15th and the treasury warrant for April 18th. So moved. A second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. All right, motion to approve pending contracts. Libby, is there anything you want to go over?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to bring a couple of contracts to the Board's attention. There are two for the Marine Department that relate to the town pier, and I was hoping the harbor master could give us a quick overview of what those repairs specifically are that will get the facility ready for the summer. If the Board has any questions about the funding, we're happy to go over that as well.
Sure.
Okay, the floating dock is broke in like probably 12 different places. In the fixed pier had some damage done to the wave barrier at the end of it. So AGM, we contracted to do the work on the fixed pier. And Mr. McKeckren is a carpenter that's going to be doing the work on the floating dock. We have them both contracted to get started here as soon as we can. And we were pretty confident that we'll be able to open up in June. We had an engineering firm come out and tell us how much it was going to cost us to get it up and running, and so that's the money that we asked for. Right now, these two, this is what we know, we know what's wrong. As soon as they get into it, we're going to probably find more and more stuff that we're going to need to add on. So that's why we asked for that money.
Okay, so you might be coming back with another contract, another date, if we find more things that are...
Well, right, if we need to replace like water lines, sewer lines, if we need to replace some floats, if we need to replace any of that stuff. This is just what we know right off the top, but we really can't see until we start getting into the project.
Okay.
Any question? This has happened, I don't know, two or three times since I've been around. Is there a better way to, at some point, should we be rebuilding the pier in a different manner? Is there a way to make it so the pier doesn't get this damage as sea level rise happens and storms, if storms intensify?
Yes, sir, we're looking into that now. We definitely know that we need to get something that can handle the environmental conditions that these are in now.
Right.
But this is going to be just to cobble it together to get it through this season. We definitely, we've had the engineers come and look, and we're weighing out options of trying to find something that's going to last better because the pier is so exposed to the weather.
Right.
Any other questions? I move approval of pending contracts.
Second.
Libby, do you think there's anything else you want to go over? Or are we, sorry, Jim.
I just wanted to bring your attention to one other contract. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, Sheila.
Which is the Novak Consulting Group contract, $114,000. It's for a townwide staffing study. We budgeted for this in the current fiscal year. We recently did an RFP. We had four responses. The responses ranged from roughly $100,000 to around $650,000. Our review group included a member of the Finance Committee, Denise Cronell, and we interviewed two finalists for the study, the Novak Consulting Group being our choice. And this is a staffing study that will look at all of the departments to basically, in a nutshell, determine staffing, if our staffing structure is adequate or not, based on all of the growth that we've had in the last 15 to 20 years. We haven't really had a comprehensive staffing review in ever.
How do they actually do that? What's the methodology?
Well, they do surveys, they do meetings, they do interviews with, probably all of you will be interviewed. They'll do a survey to the employees, and there will be other groups surveyed and met with as well. There's a lot of data they've already requested or will be requesting from us. So it's a lot of reviewing of the data and interviewing and talking to people. There are stakeholders that they will talk to, and lots of meetings.
Do they compare it to other benchmarks, to other communities, things like that?
Yes, we specifically talk to them about that.
And do wages come into this at all? They look at that stuff? Is it not a wage issue?
This is not, it's not a wage study. It's just a staffing study.
Okay. Jim, are you okay with that motion? It was seconded by Rita. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. On a citizen department request, we have an appointment to Town Government Study Committee. We have two applicants. Does either applicant like to speak at all? You had Richard Ray and Patty Rogovine for the appointment. Richard?
First of all, I apologize for my late entry into the selection process for the Government Study Committee. As a means of introduction, many of you know me as the Island's Health Director for the last 37 years, but some of you know me as the gearhead who, along with his son, built my own sports car, which shares garage space with his race car. With the car that I built, it's important that every year or so I crawl over and under the Cobra to assure myself that all fasteners and functions and all parts of the vehicle are still fit for the use intended. I believe Town Government is very much akin to my sports car. Periodically, aspects of government need to be reviewed and determined to be corrected for its purposes. It's kind of like kicking the tires. My 37 years of experience as the Health Director, or at times Chief and only Indian, have certainly familiarized myself with the workings of the Town Government. However, it's imperative that anybody filling a seat on this committee proceeds unengenderized, making recommendations if and when needed, only after substantial discussion and through parliamentary procedure. I'd ask for your affirmative votes for this committee's seat, knowing I will put in the time required, and above all, listen. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Okay, Erica, how do we do this?
We write it down and hand it over to you?
Is that...
Nope, we can tear it up.
Here's your ballot.
And you want us, Mr. Chair, to write our names on here so you can tell who we voted for?
Yeah. Yes, please. Passing to you. Okay, Rita voted for Richard Ray, Jim Richard, Jason Richard, and Matt Fee Richard. So that's four votes for Richard. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You almost lost my vote when you had the word "unengenderized." I don't even know what that meant.
Unengenderized. I had to look it up, but you should.
Spell check?
All right, thank you, Richard. Moving on, request for waiver of town noise bylaw from 10:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for private events to be held Saturday, June 2nd, 2018, at 124 Tom Nevers Road. If I have any questions, thoughts?
Up here. Yeah, good evening. My name is Jimmy Jackson. I have a small event planning business on the island called Immaculate Reception. Go ahead, you can giggle, it's supposed to be funny. I have a client who is actually a yearly attendant of the island for the past 29 years. Her dream has always been to get married on Nantucket, it's her happy place. And she's getting married June 2nd at 124 Tom Nevers Road, which is exactly the last house on the left-hand side of the street on the water side. And we are requesting to go until 11 o'clock that evening. We have some difficulty with transportation, getting the guests out there because of all the other events that are going on on the island that evening, and so we're not going to be able to start a ceremony until 6 o'clock. Therefore, excuse me, by the time ceremony is over, we'll end up with like a three and a half hour reception. So I've already checked with a couple of real estate agents who sponsor the home next door at 122 Tom Nevers Road. It is not occupied at this time, and in the event that it does, I'm always good about taking over a little basket with some beverages and some snacks in it for them to, and ask the guests to sit on their deck and enjoy the music, or if they'd like to swing by at 9 o'clock and have a dance and a piece of cake, they're more than welcome to do that as well.
Good move, good, smart move.
Yeah, it usually works out okay.
Any questions for applicant?
Are those the only neighbors that would be affected?
I'm sorry?
It's just those are the only neighbors.
Yeah, they were the only neighbors. There's nobody on the other side. It's the very last house on the way. Yeah. And actually, the house that we're renting actually has a large frontage and small back area where the town's going to go. The house next door is closer to the water, and they have a large back. So it's actually the houses here and that other house is here. And we usually, and I always place the band facing the water anyway, so it won't even be going in that direction.
I make a motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion approves. Okay, discussion regarding Scansona Beach Preservation Fund, SPPF, geotextile tube project expansion. Just a little, just to get us started on this. We had executive session a week or two ago where we discussed this in the Board, and I think the public wanted us to be as transparent as possible, as we want to, of the majority of what we discussed there, and explain how complex this process is from all angles. And so tonight, I think the objective is for the Board to discuss this. We have Town Council here, SPPF is here, and so I'd like to start a discussion with us, and I will take comment at the end. This is not a public hearing, but we will have comment at the end for the public. If you can just hold the comments to, as we get going, if that's okay with everyone.
And I just wanted to disclose that I have filed a disclosure with the Town Clerk regards meetings that I've attended of the Coastal Conservancy in 2015 and 2016. No financial ties, no anything else, so that is with the Town Clerk.
Thank you, Rita. So some of the things I just want to read off that we discussed in executive session that I do not believe was in the packet for public consumption was, the following is what is being gathered, reviewed, worked on by the staff. Is that up behind me? A liability analysis if project expansion is denied and how those costs would be paid. And I'm just going to summarize some of these. How costs will be paid if the road fails and/or the alternative access agreement is invalid because of the reasonable efforts weren't taken. Argument. Impact on island infrastructure for sand delivery. Implications of where sand will come from. Legal review of under what conditions and situations can be bettered, or betterment assessments be charged to the town if we were to take over the current project, relocate the road. Scientific review of adverse impacts, and a couple other smaller things. So would the Board like to start the discussion? Have any questions for Town Council? Any comments on what we spoke about in executive session?
I do have a question for Town Council, just to continue to clarify, in regards to the agreement that was negotiated in 2015. And I'm still unclear about the binding nature of that agreement and whether or not there is, it's legally binding or not.
Yes.
Good evening, members of the Board. George Pucci from KP Law, Town Council's office. Select Board Member Higgins, I'm still getting used to Select Board. The question I think goes to, there was a joint statement issued in 2015 by a working group that was, consisted of two then Board of Selectmen members, two CONCON members, and representatives of SPPF. And that joint statement set forth the understanding that had been reached and set forth the terms of dismissal of an appeal to Mass DEP and dismissal of an appeal to Superior Court of SPPF's appeal of the CONCON's order on the 900-foot project. That joint settlement statement said what was to occur, that the Board would authorize, you know, the permitting for the 900-foot project to go forward to CONCON. If they would, CONCON would condition that permit, and that was contemplated to be a three-year permit with the right for SPPF to come in and seek another three years in 2018, basically to monitor how that project occurred and have the right to come in. The other thing that was announced in that joint statement was that SPPF would not seek to seek permitting for an expanded project, this project that's now before you, until that initial term had run on the 900-foot project. That was a joint statement that was looked, you know, put into draft, looked at by all parties at interest, Board of Selectmen, CONCON, Council, SPPF. And that was issued for the public, basically, so that the public would know what was going on in terms of this project and what the public could expect in the future possibly for that project. However, that joint statement was not signed, it was not intended, at least from Council's standpoint, as some type of binding contract as to what would occur in the future. It was just a statement, you know, jointly entered into just to advise the public what was going on. Municipal law has very stringent requirements for binding a municipality to a contract. Basically, that contracting party on behalf of the municipality has to have express authorization, you know, under, you know, duly enacted under whatever statute applies. Authorized agent entering into that contract on behalf of the municipality, and then binding that municipality to certain obligations. In my opinion, that joint statement would not be a binding contract. It was just, again, meant as a public joint statement as to what had occurred, what the town was agreeing to at the time, and what the intentions of the parties would be in the future with respect to the existing project and then to any potential expansion of the project. So I would not, I would not read that as any type of binding contract on behalf of the town.
Okay, thank you.
And I will respectfully disagree. I think when you went, what we were dealing with at the time, and it's not that, you know, I'm full board for this, but that you've got to act in good faith, and, you know, and we have to even be careful what we're doing and saying here tonight because at some point, this could end up in court. And I think that, you know, you have to act in good faith, and you can be assured that the other side is papering up their legal arguments. You know, we as a town should be doing the same thing if that's where we're heading. I was on that committee, and, you know, it was, you know, it was the choice, it was the lesser of a bunch of evils, and we struck something that was, you know, a pretty fair deal at that time. I think that that holds some weight, and I think it would in court. I think because it all runs down to what a reasonable person would think was a reasonable interpretation of something. You can sue for anything, and so I think we should be very careful about that. But it, but we didn't intend to promise that the next project would be guaranteed to be approved. What we said is, let's study this thing, and three years was based on, you know, that's the term that CONCON puts on things. You know, we didn't want to, we were not set to, we weren't saying, gee whiz, well, you know, three years from now, we guarantee the SPPF the world. We said, three years from now, we'll really look at this. And, you know, and we'll look strongly at what happened there to make our, or CONCON will look strongly at what happened, and then make our decision based on that. I think, you know, this, and I think that the last three months should be included in whatever that look is, whatever their interpretation is, so.
I think my question, I think there's a difference between, or what I'm trying to understand is the difference between good faith and then legal ramifications of that good faith statement. I feel strongly that my good faith agreement is with the public at large because I wasn't part of that negotiation and not on that board at the time. And I think that for me, there's a big difference. You can sue for anything, but what is your case? Can you win? And I just want to understand, as we're looking at this and the good faith agreement, what are the chances of, what are the legal chances of winning?
But you didn't ask that question, and that, and I would advise the Council not to answer that question right here. You know, that's, some of that is stuff that should be going, strategy and legal stuff shouldn't be happening here in front of the camera. And so, you know, and how strong our case is shouldn't be happening in front of the camera. I just think that, and that's, you shouldn't be, we shouldn't be, and that's a difficult thing. Like, that isn't the specific question you asked, and so...
I meant to, I forgot to mention that we weren't going to be making any decisions tonight or making a motion because we don't have a full board. It's more of the, for anybody at ease, I guess we thought that. Any other, any other thoughts, questions so far?
I know when we talked about putting this on the agenda, you know, in fact, I said to the viewers out there, please come, because I think we're very interested to hear what the public's saying. So I don't have a lot of questions right now, and as you say, a lot of that for now is going on within the executive session. I know Rick Atherton talked about how important it is that we are transparent, maybe give all the parties an idea about our process too, so I don't think we're going to do that tonight, but that's something I'm mindful of, so, but I'll reserve my questions for later.
I think, I think we're trying to do our due diligence and look at, if we make this decision, what happens, and look at the entire, all the ramifications, all the implications, and also try and explain to the public of what's happening. Go ahead, Rita.
Oh, no, I was just going to ask, so Jim, are you asking if we have public comment now?
No. I just, that's what I said. It wasn't my question.
I was just going to mention that we had previously discussed about some questions that the Board might have for the proponent.
Oh, yeah, yep. So we had three questions for SPPF. What is the annual maintenance cost of the current system, and what is the expected annual cost of the proposed expanded system? Where is the sand planned to come from? And if you do not get approval for the expanded system, do you plan on continuing maintaining the current system? Those were the three questions that we had. And I can repeat those, or if you want to. Did you have a statement or a comment you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Josh Posner from Scansona Beach Preservation Fund. If I could say a few things before getting into the three questions that were just asked.
Sure.
So Stephen Cohen is off island this week, so I'm going to do the best I can to kind of carry on the discussion here. And Jamie Feely is here, who is well-versed in the construction and maintenance issues. So we are here to follow up on the request that the Conservation Commission have a chance to review the application for the expanded project. And we're doing that in accordance with the good faith understanding that we reached with leaders of the town back in 2015, where we agreed to drop the rock revetment and settle our differences and the legal dispute, and to delay the request for an expanded project until 2018, which would then give the town five storm seasons to evaluate how the project was actually performing. When we requested that this application go to the Conservation Commission, we reached out to Libby, and for various reasons, it got to your agenda on March 7th, so just six weeks ago. The question at that time, or one of the big questions at that time, was how is the project working in the view of the Conservation Commission? Well, it turns out that we file every year an annual report with all the data that we're required to collect under the terms of the permit. And so we had just filed the annual report for the previous year in January. And the Conservation Commission hires an independent reviewer to take a look at that annual report. It had, and it scheduled, actually, after the meeting that we had, the meeting from early March, it scheduled the meeting to go over in detail the annual report, which, as you know, they accepted, and, you know, it's generally viewed as the project has been working. Now, that annual report didn't include all of the data for the last March storms, which have been the biggest thing that the project has had to face in its five years of existence. But we did do a lot of reporting on that with the information that was available, pictures and information about what's happened to the sand. And the project has done very well through the March storms. A lot of sand has been lost, as is expected. More sand was lost than on any prior occasion, but since then, more sand has been delivered. The project was recovered, and, you know, we feel that we've been doing pretty well out there. So we hope that with the performance that we've been able to demonstrate, that we are approaching, I know you're not going to act tonight, but that we are soon approaching a time when this application can go, as it was expected to go in that agreement back in 2015, to the Conservation Commission for their appropriate review. Couple of other points, and then I'll get to your questions. So, and just one thing about the, well, never mind, let me just get to, I wasn't sure what you were going to be asking tonight, and so you've asked three things. What's the annual maintenance cost? The, we have been spending close to $1 million a year maintaining this project. It is a function of how much sand has to be delivered, and it's a function of what is the price. And we have limited supply with just two on-island sand pits, and the negotiation with the sand pits is a challenging aspect of the project. Where does the sand come from? Well, as I said, I think earlier in March, and I've explained this to the Conservation Commission, we're actually in the process of doing a serious look at what alternatives we can identify for ongoing sustainable sand for the project. The Conservation Commission, part of the question is, how much sand do we need to deliver? And that's going to be something that the Conservation Commission will determine, or the permitting process will determine. We have been delivering a significant amount of sand in excess of the historic average of sand that washes away. of sand that's, that washes away there. And so, um, part of the question about how much is the sand gonna cost and where's it gonna come from is, how much sand are we talking about? And that's something that will be addressed by the Conservation Commission. We know that were we to receive a permit for the expanded project, that we need to come back to the Board of Selectmen for a license. And at that time, we would expect that this whole question of sand and where's it coming from and how is it being sustainably delivered would be addressed. And so we look forward to that and it's something that we've said to the, to the Conservation Commission. They, as I think you know, have said that while they can require that sand be provided, that it's outside of their jurisdiction to say, where's it gonna come from and can you use the roads or can't you use the roads or anything like that? We're open to discussing, you know, the whole impact on roads and a reasonable method for, for addressing that issue. I, I, I chatted notes and I can only read two of them here. So one of them was the annual maintenance cost, one of them was the, where's the sand coming from and?
If you don't get approval of the expanded system, we continue.
So, the, um, the problem with this and, and, you know, I, I, somehow I think that some of my comments from six weeks ago were misunderstood or misinterpreted, or I didn't quite say it right. We've always been talking about this as a 4,000-foot project. When we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the town back in 2013, at the end of a horrible erosion year, when we all decided to try and work together cooperatively, yes, in the midst of a bit of a controversy, but still a memorandum of understanding and a joint arrangement with the town, it was for a 4,000-foot project. As the year went on and as the next winter approached, we decided to try to accelerate 1,000 feet of it, where the road was the most vulnerable and where the danger was the greatest. And so that's what we put in through a whole difficult permitting process that we've all been talking about. This has never been a 1,000-foot project that we're now seeking to expand to 4,000 feet. The only way, we, we have paid for 100% of the costs of this project, as you all know, to date. Most of that money has come from people who will be protected if the project is allowed to expand. Most of the area that's currently protected is vacant lots, some people across the street. So there's contributors from up that way, but that's a lot of money. And the way that we've been able to raise that money is from people who expect in the future, or hope in the future, that they will be able to get protection based on the successful performance of this pilot project. And so it's difficult to see how we sustain, um, paying the costs of the subset of the project, especially in an environment where people are being told it's not gonna be allowed to be expanded. So that's, that's the, uh, that's the situation. The 4,000 is not a new expansion idea from us. It's always been there. Uh, it was very much in the midst of the, um, negotiation or the settlement talks that we entered into in good faith and that we have honored in good faith in terms of doing what we said we would do.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Actually, Josh, can I, Josh, can I ask you a quick question? Do you anticipate that if it's a million for 900 feet, that it's going to be four million for 4,000?
Uh, no, it's gonna be expensive. It's gonna be more expensive than it currently is. We currently, on average, have been, have been delivering more than the historic average. And so we are, we believe that by the time we get done through the whole permitting process, we'll end up with a, uh, a volume of sand required that's more reflective of what the history has been. The area where it's being expanded to loses less sand than the current area. So we think it'll be about double. Uh, and we also think that we will be successful somehow, although we haven't solved it quite yet, um, in getting the cost of sand to the project down. You know, this is one of the special features of Nantucket. On the mainland, sand costs $5, $10 a yard. We have been dealing with, uh, many multiples of that on Nantucket. And so the sand cartel, if you will, or the situation that we, that we face on Nantucket is just yet another, um, extra challenge.
Thanks.
Josh, I had a question. So if you start, um, in September, whenever you get your, about how long do you think, can you just talk about how you might phase it? About how long will it be, um, for you to implement it, the entire 4,000?
Well, you know, ideally, we would have a permit in place and a solution to this sand problem and a license from you by the end of the summer. And we would build this in the fall and it would take three or four months to build.
Okay, three or four months, okay.
Any questions, Matt? No, Mike, no. Okay, thank you, Josh. Anybody from the public like to speak? All right, a question. Judith, oh, Judith, sorry.
Hello, my name's Judith Wagner and I live at 50 Quidnet Road. Uh, I'm here as a private citizen, but my background, as I've said when I've spoken previously, is I was a law professor at the University of North Carolina for 35 years and taught property law, land use and things of that sort. So I've been very interested in the questions raised by this project. I've written a memo to you to just make it easier for folks to be able to take in what I was going to say, and I hope that's helpful. I don't mean to be overly formal about this, but, uh, here's the four main points I've wanted to make. First was that I think it would really be beneficial for the select board to consider what it's going to do with Baxter Road and if it's going to do something to go ahead and do it. As I understand from the, uh, legal opinion given in 2012, that doesn't mean it has to be paved. You've got the right-of-way now established, but I think that would untangle the issues about whether this is a so-called public project or a private project. I think a lot of citizens, and I appreciate the sentiment Mr. Kelly expressed about wanting to hear opinions on this, that I think a lot of people really look at this as a private project, but the town was brought into it because of the road. And I think, as I've said here, that the whole question of climate change, I've been researching about this pretty steadily the last several weeks. There's a lot going on, as you know, about climate change, including, uh, challenges about what liabilities towns have if they don't do certain things to intervene to protect against climate change, uh, things about flooding. I'm sure you're all familiar with some of that, but I simply would suggest that you think about asking for further counsel. It's been better than five years since you had that original decision. And when you look at the, uh, statute, it says the cap on damages if you made this into a private way and didn't maintain it. If you put signage up and all, I don't think you're looking at a big possibility of liability, but I'm glad you're asking that as part of your list of questions you're pursuing. Second thing is the nature of property rights on Nantucket beaches. And I have to say, uh, this has been fascinating. I, uh, have gone back and have been spending days in the deed vault downtown and looking at the handwritten records about the various easements given by the proprietors, uh, back in the 1880s, primarily around Sconcebe. I gave you in this memo excerpts from two deeds. It's taken quite a long time because it's very hard to read and to transcribe and so on. But moreover, there's need to really track these deeds against the actual plans and see how that relates to the current landscape. However, I just wanted to venture that the opinion the town received in 2017 about libi, about questions of public trust doctrine and things like that, I don't think the attorney there, there's no reference to proprietor's grants. So I think that that opinion didn't address what I'm urging you to think about. And indeed, I would say that because that land was given in trust, that means the town as trustee has a fiduciary duty to the public, which in my mind means it's not like town land that you could acquire and do this or that with. It's that you have an obligation to the inhabitants of the town to preserve and protect the beach right of way as it was given by the proprietor. So there's, just if you're looking at liability, I would suggest you think about what the liability of trustees would be if they don't follow through on their fiduciary duty. Next thing, these are perhaps less major points, uh, but I think that, uh, you might try to approach the state agency that reviews permits and ask if they would consider getting an attorney general's opinion. In Massachusetts, unlike North Carolina, where I've been more recently, the state agencies are the ones that typically are able to get an attorney general's opinion. But since that state agency had no real knowledge about the proprietor's grants and the land title, I think there's really a distinct question there about whether the town can agree to have another private party intervene and curtail, uh, public rights. And if I were in your shoes, thinking about liability, I'd want to know the answer to that. And in the meantime, since, uh, Mr. Posner raised it, I really would like to know why it is that 4,000 feet is what is being discussed here. As I read the state wetlands statute and your ordinances by laws here, it seems to me that only property that was built up and not substantially changed prior to, uh, 1978, when the Act went in, is really grandfathered. So as I've been tracking through all these records and trying to understand what's going on, it appears to me that there's very little property there that's actually protected in a way that would trigger that grandfather provision in the state statute. If that's in fact the case, you're being asked to give away rights to parties that are not grandfathered under the state legislation. And if that's the case, I think you really need to think twice. I, I really wanted to stress that this should be looked at in the context of the coastal resiliency planning that I know you're doing, because if you do this kind of thing in one place, there's going to be other, uh, situations come up. I live in Quidnet. Pulpus Road was down for most of a month after the breach that occurred in, uh, the pond at Sacagawea. So who knows what's gonna happen with the increasing storms and sea level rise. I look at the downtown with the flooding that's been visible to everybody this year and just think, you really need to have a, a plan and a budget, looking at that whole array of things about how many roads you're going to have to relocate or how, what kind of policy you're going to develop for uniformity and fair-mindedness on that point. And then the last thing I wanted to say, that I think, uh, I was at the meeting of the Concom and I understand Mr. Posner was as well, but the, the Concom did not agree to accept those findings as facts. What they did was to agree to accept the report into the record. The, I wrote to the, uh, reporter, the Inky Mary, and I understand they're going to run a retraction tomorrow because their headline was flatly incorrect. So I would really urge for the benefit of the public that the person who was the independent reviewer on that report be brought to town and that both you and the Concom and public could ask some questions about the findings. The time spent at that meeting was most of two hours. I think the public got 15 minutes to speak. And the, uh, presenters for Mr. Posner and company had sort of time to characterize everybody else's opinions without really having a chance to probe in depth about whether in fact those were justified conclusions. I think particularly there would be need, given the, as Mr. Rogavine said, uh, at the Concom, when you look at the Sacagawea Pond break and more particularly the Hoix Hollow destruction, that makes me wonder, without having any science at hand, did the project up by Sankey, did that in some way have a bearing on what's happening across the whole of the eastern side of the island? And I think you and the public would really like that to be monitored. It makes no sense to me. My husband's a geologist, I'm not, but I pay some attention to him, to just monitor along the nose of where the geotubes went in. When I was looking at these old maps of, uh, the area around Sankey, the flag development and everything else, you could see that, uh, and then I was reading the EIS for this, uh, project, you could see that that whole area of the island, ideally, apparently for Mr. Posner and company, would all be armored in some way, geotubes or something. And you, you really, this is too precious a place, the natural resources are too important to too many people to not take the care of needed. So I just cannot understand why it's even appropriate to be talking about a 4,000-foot project. I think they'd be lucky to get a three-year extension of a temporary emergency permit with much more careful monitoring and with sufficient evidence. I've asked some friends that I used to teach with at University of North Carolina, who are geologists and marine scientists, to identify some PhD students who could do some work on our collective behalf, because I know you don't have the money to hire infinite experts. But this is too important to too many people for too many generations to let it be, uh, taken away without that kind of inquiry. Thank you.
And I just want to thank you for your, I haven't had a chance to read it all, but thank you for taking the time and doing the research.
I love that you find the, the work in the basements of fascinating.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to see some of my altas looking into this. Yeah. I've been, I've been looking at this stuff for years and it's, I, I would suggest you look at the public trust doctrine and, and how we, Nantucket was part of New York, the public trust came in, and then we came into Massachusetts. And so those changes there are not, uh, in my opinion, are not, uh, we're not bound by some of those.
I think you're the one that knows about that content and the town meeting and the...
I know some of that stuff, yeah.
That was referenced in some of our...
Yeah, and it's, and some of it applies here and some of it doesn't, but I think it's pretty interesting. And we forget that. Some of this is institutional knowledge that slowly goes away, that the town forgets it, the, you know, everyone's in a rush to, you know, to build and, and lawyer and do whatever we do. But some of these things are, you know, are pretty important, so.
Any comments, thoughts from the board? On what Judith had to say?
I have a question, I don't know, Josh might be able to answer, maybe even Jeff. In the success criteria, I did have a question about, um, D. I don't know if we have that, Erica, but it, it mentions no excessive loss in updrift or downdrift beach cross-section. And I just wanted to know what that beach cross-section was, if it was just in front of the geotubes or if it was a larger area? For the success criteria?
So how was it defined?
Yeah, what is, for the success criteria, D, it says no excessive loss in updrift or downdrift beach cross-section?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just wondering what that beach cross-section is?
So there are, I think, I'm gonna be a little bit over my head in terms of the technical details, but we can give you more than you'd ever want. I think that there's 60 different transects that are measured. Many of these have gone back 25 years, where we have a surveyor who goes, currently it's four times a year, really, most of this time period, it's been two times a year. We're hoping it gets changed back to two times a year. It's a lot of costs involved. But we measure all of the transects in these different locations, time after time. And that's the basis on which, um, one of the, one of the major questions is, is, is what we're doing perhaps working for the geotube protection area, but it's having a negative impact elsewhere? And so that's what has not, there, there's been no evidence and no data and no information that's been generated over this five-year time period that has, that's had a, you know, a negative impact.
And those 60 transects, how far, what's the length of that?
The, the, the farthest one towards Great Point is in Wall Winit. And the farthest one going in the other direction is Low Beach. So Sconcebe Sewer Bed, Sconcebe Sewer Bed, it's about six miles. And it's not evenly spaced, it's more concentrated and the areas closer, but it does go out.
Thanks, Josh.
Nice. I don't want to, well, never mind. I think it's fine. Any comment from the public? Anybody else? Board, anything else to discuss? Thoughts?
Um, I think, I think it's worth having some, you know, our attorneys take a look at this, um, give us some fair ideas on it personally, so.
Cormac?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Cormac Collier, Executive Director of the Nantucket Land Council. Perhaps I, I missed something right in the beginning in terms of process. What's the next? What's the next steps in terms of town council response, responding to, I believe, the list that Ms. Higgins had referenced earlier? And then is that going to be then done in executive session, or are you going to come back out into a public session? Because I have a number of questions, but I don't think they're really appropriate for this time right now. It's probably when town council responds to, because that's what I was kind of coming here for, because I thought that the town council was going to respond to your questions and you were going to have an engagement with them, so that it is transparent, that we know. I think you, you wanted to sort of show us what you were talking about on Thursday in executive session, but that hasn't really come out yet. Thanks.
I think it actually, it has a bit, Cormac, because the, the questions are listed, like the list of questions is out, and that's public, correct?
I don't think that was in the packet.
The item in the packet wasn't put in the public packet because of the sensitivity of it.
Okay.
However, we agreed during the agenda meeting that we would sort of read out what those were. So there are the three questions that were asked, and there's a, pretty much of a list of other items that are being gathered, reviewed, worked out by staff and town council that we will frame into a document and put it on the town website so that people can understand the complexity of both sides of this issue. There is a lot of information and research that the board needs to understand, I think, before it makes a decision. It has another executive session scheduled for next week to, I think, take in some of the public information, public comment that was received tonight and whether or not we've gotten any additional information as a result of, of what we hear from SBPF and, and town council. So this is going to take some, some time to get at, but we, we will get the information that we're working on up on the website, yes. But it's pretty much, I think, as whoever read it out.
But this, this was scheduled for people to come and talk. So this is, you know, it's time, if you have comments or questions, this is the time to raise.
Yeah, to follow up, I guess, really, one of the most pertinent issues to us is in the code, Chapter 67E, and as this being fairly obvious, a private property project with perhaps some component of a public project for Baxter Road at the end of the existing project. But clearly, as you move farther away, it is for private property purposes. And I'm astounded at how that cannot go to town meeting. It clearly says for private property purposes. So it doesn't say, it doesn't say anything about the public. It doesn't say, so there was a jump there saying that, oh, since it does have a public aspect to it, then the private property aspect gets wiped out and doesn't have to go to town meeting. No, there's a private property aspect to it and it has to go to town meeting, is our, our position. Probably not important to go back and forth on that right now, because I imagine we're going to get to, so that was sort of my, my point, that we're going to get to that at some point, I hope, between you, town council, and the public, because that's a large portion of where the public's concern is. And then I would like to echo Ms. Wagner's statements, and I did read her letter, and I believe that should be forwarded to town council for their review and response as she suggests. And then I would have a suggestion for you, but perhaps I'll do it through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Posner, to ask him to go on the record that if you do sign the notice of intent, that they will agree now to not appeal a Concom negative decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Cormac. Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, I'm, my name's Rick Atherton. Just to, kind of a follow-up to Cormac, but it's a subject I've spent a fair amount of time thinking about, 67E. And this also goes back to the beginning of the Scotsett projects years ago, before the current Baxter Road matter. The town has always used a license as its vehicle to provide permission for the projects to go forward. And there are alternatives. It could also enter into a lease agreement. And it seems to me that the distinction is important. I have always thought when the town uses a license, it's kind of like when a stoop on a house is intruding on the town's right-of-way in a sidewalk. It's kind of a minor thing, and therefore to take it all the way to town meeting to provide a legal easement seems overkill. And a license gets around the requirement to go to town meeting, as I understand it, and council's free to correct me, because it's terminable at will. And it just seems to me this is a project now that is clearly intended to be forever. And it's not temporary, although it says temporary all the way through the existing project. The intent is not to be temporary. The intent is to use the town-owned property forever. And it seems to me that's not appropriate, to use a license under those circumstances. It almost amounts to a disposition of the property. The public will no longer be able to walk upon the section of the beach that has the geo tubes on it in any way. And the property, the person who would be licensed or get a lease, is able to construct a project on it. It's, as I say, it's almost like you own it and you're building on it. So I would just encourage you to have more discussion about the method by which you intend, if there's going to be a permission to go to the Concom, and if it comes back to you for a license, or if you should think about the form of disposition before you agree it goes to Concom. You consider those matters, because they are all relevant to whether it has to go to town meeting or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Posner, would you like to answer Mr. Cormac Collier's question about if the NOI was to be issued? Would you be willing to not appeal? I believe that was the question. Cormac?
Yeah, you know, we do hope that we can get it permitted locally through the Conservation Commission, but we feel that we have certain rights, like every other citizen of the Commonwealth, and that this is being permitted under the Wetlands Protection Act, and that has within it an appeal process. And we've had to use it before. We hope we don't have to use it again, but we're not going to give up our right, just as anybody else has, for that appeal.
I could respond.
Cormac?
Thank you. I would then like you to remind yourselves of town council's memo to you, saying that you should be very wary of signing any document to go to the Concom if they do not choose to give up their appellate rights. Thanks.
Mr. Rogavine?
Dirk Rogavine, I represent the Quidnutt Squam Association, homeowners to the north of this project. We participated quite actively in all of the permitting that led up to what's currently there. Mr. Posner is correct, they have utilized their rights to appeal before. They did that with the last project, and they ended up getting a superseding order of conditions from DEP. I referenced this last time I spoke to you. I hope you all got a copy of it. You can ask Libby to get a copy of it. It's actually on the town website, under all the Baxter documents, although when I was perusing them today, I noticed documents that are no longer listed there that used to be, which I thought was kind of puzzling. But I'll talk to the administration about that, see if we can straighten it out. Maybe just my phone wasn't doing it or something. But this thing is dated December 19th, the DEP. If you don't want to read the whole thing, I can understand that. Most of it's boilerplate, lots of forms. But the first three pages are from Elizabeth Cola, I can't remember how to pronounce her name, Cola Harris, Chief of the Well and Waterways Program, and it summarizes it. So there's not a whole lot to read, you know, that you could, I know that you get a lot of paper for these meetings, and that's what happens with people on boards and commissions. But this is like two and a half pages to read, and it summarizes it, and it sets out some of the conditions which are imposed both on Scotsett Beach as well as the town of Nantucket, because the town of Nantucket was the applicant at this time, even though Scotsett Beach was the one appealing. So this is binding on you guys and on SBPF. And just frankly, looking through it, I don't think you're in compliance. So when the next appeal shows up at DEP, obviously, we brought you their attention, like they didn't pay attention to the last one. Why should we even be looking at this again now? One of the things you need to pay attention to is this permit was good for three years. They allow it to be extended for another three years. We have to apply for an extension before the first one expires. So you might want to check the calendars, find out what the dates are. If SBPF isn't going to do it, the town might be in a position they want to, because otherwise you now have these unpermitted structures out there, because the permit is quite clearly temporary. It talks about it. It talks about their removal. It talks about what the town has to do in the meantime. And I really think you guys need to pay attention to this. Two and a half pages. Thanks.
Thank you. Dan, and then Josh, would you want to, go Josh first, and then, Josh first, and then come up?
It's probably good that we're not making decisions tonight, because our lawyer isn't here, and I'm not a lawyer, and I don't want to get into total legal. But our permit is not, our, our current permit was issued by the Conservation Commission. It's not issued under the superseding order. A superseding order was issued, but...
Mr. Posner, can you talk through me, so we don't get in a back and forth?
At least that's my understanding of, of, of that. Dirk, I'm sorry, there was a second point that was actually what I...
Two and a half pages. Thank you. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Deanna Atherton from the Nantucket Coastal Conservancy. This may be a question through you to town council, but I wanted to just address the, the good faith issue. It was my understanding that the overriding document that was first entered into on behalf of the parties was the memorandum of understanding that was signed in July of 2013, and it had since been amended. But the memorandum of understanding has a provision in it that if either party finds it, and I can't remember the exact words, I'm sitting here trying to remember, there are two, two words, if either party finds it's impractical, and I think the other one is imprudent, I'm not sure, to go forward with the agreement, either party giving a certain notice, I think it's 60 days, can abrogate the agreement. So we can debate about good faith and what was signed and wasn't signed, but the memorandum of understanding is something that the public has always looked to. And I would hope that with town council, you would explore that option, because I believe that is available to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other comments from the public? The board? Libby said going forward, we have another executive session. Just to summarize where next steps are. Executive session next week?
It's next week, yep.
On this?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a quick comment. I just, I think it's, it's more complex than, than either side sometimes wants to make it same. And, you know, and if it ends up at town meeting or something else, you know, we have to understand what the consequences and the, you know, the various exposure that we're putting the town in one way or the other. And so there's, and some of the things that went on tonight, I think, were sort of, we shouldn't be negotiating on camera, and, you know, some of it was, in my mind, somewhat inappropriate. I don't think we crossed the line, I'm fine with that, but I, I think that, you know, this is a very complex issue. I think a lot of the questions that we had were, have still not been answered, you know, in this, and we knew this was coming. You know, we knew that this date was coming three years ago. And so, you know, I, I would hope that, you know, I, I think one of the suggestions tonight was the reviewer, speak to the board or something in Concom. If that happens, I'd like that to happen after they get the information on the last quarter of the year, so that, you know, so we're looking at everything.
The first quarter of this year?
First quarter of this year, yeah, the first quarter of this year. You know, so, and I got a couple of the comments, but that, that's the main one, if we are going to do that. And I think some of the suggestions were good. But, but in fairness to the applicant, I think we need to move this along, you know, quickly, too. I don't think that, you know, in fairness to the applicant, and, you know, and if the board is going to choose a different path than what we're on, then we have to make sure that we've, that our ducks are in a row and that we aren't dragging our feet, you know, because that will hurt us. So, you know, this, this can't be put aside for long periods of time again. We need to keep this moving.
So we are spending a lot of time on it. We talked about it a week or two ago, we're talking about it tonight, we talked about it in March, we've got, we've had at least one, if not two. We had a long executive session the other day, so I just want everybody to know, we're, this is taking, we're taking a lot of time discussing this as a board, and every time we bring it up, we, we get different, we get more levels of complexity. And so it is going to take time, and I, I'm just, I'm one that likes to understand clearly the options we have and the, especially unattended consequences of it. Tonight, for example, I heard potential liability for, you know, for the town, for things we, but we are, we have already done. So those are, those are things that we all need to explore, and it's going to take some time, and I hope everybody, all parties, understand that.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Jim. Rita, any other thoughts?
No.
Okay. I think we're going to come, going to come to the end of this. Thank you all for coming, thank you for your comments, really appreciate it. Thank you, town council. Keep going. Okay, moving on to public hearings. Going to open the public hearing to consider petition for National Grid, Nantucket Electric Company, to install fiberglass box pad in South Shore Road.
Jim Huxley with National Grid. Yes, we're looking to install a box pad off Pole 7, and then come across the roadway to Plova Lane, which is private, to feed a new house, number 6, Blueberry Lane.
Any questions from the board? Libby, did you have one thing?
I was just going to mention, I didn't see it.
Sorry, it's still public comment.
Yeah.
Is there any, this is a public hearing, is there any comment? Anybody here to speak on this, from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Sorry.
I was only going to mention, I didn't see it in the departmental comments, but if there's going to be a cut across the road, then in the board's approval, I would recommend that you specifically make note that the road cut needs to be properly and timely patched, if not overlaid.
And is that the word, do you like to be in the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I make a motion to grant this petition with the amendment or the additional comment from the town manager.
And the DPW sewer and water comments, they're existing.
Right, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. I'd like to open the public hearing to consider petition for Verizon New England for Plan 2017-44 to relocate Pole 54. So anybody here to speak on that?
Good evening, Tom Stanton, Representative Verizon. The request was to move Pole 54 over 12, approximately 10 feet westerly from current location on West Chester Street.
Is there anyone here from the public to speak on that? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions, comments from the board?
Questions, that pole, from here, is it in a sidewalk or is it off the sidewalk?
It's off the sidewalk. There's a grass strip.
Grass, it's in that strip?
Yeah. One foot off of the edge of the, of the road.
Okay.
Your motion?
Yep, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes?
Thank you.
With the, with departmental comments. Thank you.
And the reason I ask that question, any chance we have when we're moving a pole to get it off a sidewalk and make a sidewalk, a sidewalk again, we should try to do it.
Might be a policy there we can make.
Imagine.
Okay, like to open the public hearing to consider application for amended bulk fuel storage license for Nantucket Electric Company for installation of 30,000 gallons of Class 3 Ultra Low... of Class III Ultra Low sulfur distillate, if I said that right, fuel, 8,000 gallons of Class III Number Two diesel fuel, 500 gallons of Class III Number Two diesel fuel, and 400 gallons of Class III Number Two diesel fuel to be located at 32 Bunker Road.
Hi, I'm Zach Bonin, representing Nantucket Electric. As part of the ongoing generator replacement project at the Bunker Road facility, 30,000 gallon above ground tank to store ultra-low sulfur distillate fuel will be installed. As such, Nantucket Electric is seeking to amend the existing license for that facility to accommodate the additional storage.
Is there anyone else here from the public to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do you have any questions for Chief Murphy or for Zach?
I just wanted to note that Chief Murphy has conditions, two-page conditions in your packet, and I would make any approval conditional on those.
Okay.
Seventeen.
There's seventeen conditions that, that went through a five or six-month process. Correct.
So I make a motion that we can, that we approve the application as outlined here with the conditions so stipulated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you, Zach. All right, I'd like to open a public hearing to consider amending Chapter 200 Traffic Rules and Regulations to amend Nantucket Parking District's map to include West Chester Street between Sunset Hill Lane and North Liberty Street. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on that?
And can we get a little summary about why we're, and I read all the documents, but it's a little complex, so we could maybe from the town manager about why we're doing this and why we had to bring it back.
Sure. We had a technical glitch in the butter notification. We, the board already voted on this back in December. We discovered the glitch at a later time. So our, our recommendation is, would be that this is a reconfirmation of your prior vote. Up to you if you want to hear any testimony that was previously provided, but if it's the same kind of comments, you know, up to you.
So not necessarily reopen the whole discussion. It's just a, okay, thank you.
Curtis Barnes, 12 Sunset Hill, and I just want to thank the board for bringing this back up. We did originally petition, you did originally vote, and the map shows what we're asking for. The reason this was happening is people were parking there all day long and going to work in town and partially blocking the road. And then on weekends, workers were leaving their trucks up and down on Sunset Hill and West Chester Street. So I think this corrects a situation and would appreciate if you reaffirm the vote.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here from the public who'd like to speak on this? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the board? I'm sorry, Erica?
Sorry. In your packet, you have three findings listed. So any motion should include those findings?
Those are the same from before.
We didn't make formal findings last time. That was one of the glitches.
Oh, I see.
So the motion this time should...
Yeah. The findings, West Chester Street and Sunset Hill Lane are directly connected to a street, which is already part of a district, West Chester Street, that in the case of additions to the residential parking permit district, the streets in question are used regularly for parking by significant numbers of persons who do not live in the immediate neighborhood, which causes a parking hardship for those living on the streets during the summer. And the third is that the adoption of the amendment will further the purposes of the goals established by the board, a select board, as they relate to parking and the control of traffic. So those are the three.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you all for coming. Town managers report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got Natural Resources Coordinator reviewing pond openings. And I just want to make mention that we had some public comment last week, and we had previously been discussing having an update from Natural Resources about pond openings. As you all probably know, we've had some inquiries about, about them, and there have been some suggestions that the town consider more routinely opening Maya Comet Pond in particular. Natural Resources has been spending a lot of time working on pond management principles with the Nantucket Pond Coalition. We have a draft that we're reviewing internally. And I spoke with Natural Resources Coordinator recently and a couple of other people about, since there is a lot of public interest in this, and there are a lot of issues surrounding ponds, management and openings specifically in general, it might not be a bad idea to have a kind of a public forum with people who have concerns and suggestions with town staff, so that we can also review what town constraints are. There are probably some misconceptions all around about some issues. And I've just wanted to mention that we're going to be working to try to set something like that up, but I, I think there may be one, at least one, maybe more people here tonight who might want to make a public comment, and we would try to be sure to include them in our public forum discussion.
Sure. So Jeff Carlson, Natural Resources Coordinator for the town, and with me tonight, if there's any specific questions, our water quality specialist, Caitlin Shaw, is here as well. She's kind of the boots-on-the-ground for all of our measuring and monitoring and has a, a better feel for some of the measurements we've taken in the last few weeks. But just as an update to kind of run through the three ponds that were open this spring, obviously the one that got the most press was the opening of Maya Comet Pond at the end of March, right around March 27th, where it was open to the ocean without permits. Just to kind of run through our permitting requirements for any of the pond openings, the town does hold a home rule, home rule petition issued by the state that allows us to open and close the four great ponds on the island without any further state or local permitting. So that would exempt us from the Wetlands Protection Act, any of the other state water quality standards that are involved in some of those, but it doesn't exempt us from any federal regulation. And constructing a channel between a great pond and the ocean falls within the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers, so required to hold permits to open any of those ponds with them. The only two ponds that we currently hold permits for are for Hummock Pond and Sacagawea Pond, and that's where the dates are set for April 1st to April 30th, and then for Sacagawea Pond for considerations for piping pullover and lease turn. Those dates really get hemmed in for the 1st of April to the 15th of April. So I'm happy to go through more history on pond openings, but just to kind of run through what happened this spring, that pond was open, Maya Comet Pond stayed open for well over a week, and we saw additional washover at the end of the pond, continued for a little while longer. There's still a significant channel on the ground in between the ocean and the pond, what used to be the beach area, but that opening has stabilized at this point. We've been in discussion with the land bank where the channel was located to do some additional work to kind of heal that area before it completely drains out and dries and creates kind of a mud flat that's there to maybe do some, some nourishment. And been in talks with DEP about how to do that and how to get that permitted or, or the correct way to get that situation kind of fixed on the beach there. To kind of go around the island, then, Sacagawea Pond was opened on the 4th of April, and that pond remained open for about a day, and then we reopened it again due to some sand that had collected on the inside edge of the pond on the 6th, and then it stayed open for about four and a half days beyond there. I'll let Caitlin go over some of the salinity levels and goals for that really quickly. And then Hummock Pond was opened after that. Hummock Pond was open on the 9th, and unless it's different as of this afternoon, was still open and regularly tidal cycling with the ocean at this point. So do you want to hop in on some of the salinity measurements real quickly?
So before the, I'm the, he mentioned it. I'm the Water Resource Specialist for the Natural Resources Department. So before Maya Comet Pond was opened, it was a freshwater system. It was below one parts per thousand, which is, to give a comparison, the ocean is about 32 to 35. So Maya Comet Pond was .1. And then today, Maya Comet Pond towards the lower portion was six times greater than that, so 1.2 about. That has some implications for bio geochemistry, which no one probably wants to hear about right now, but there is some ion exchange that can occur when saltwater enters a freshwater system, where phosphorus binds to iron typically, but when seawater enters a system, the sulfate ions in the seawater preferentially bind with that iron and release phosphorus. So that could have implications for our algal bloom potential this coming summer. But we will be having a much more in-depth water quality update coming up. So that's for this system. And then as you go up north, the salinity does decline, but is still, is still higher than it typically has been in the past. For the past six years, it's been below one until...
Question for you. Will that salinity go down at all? Would evaporate? Or is it there to stay?
No, it's definitely not there to stay. As you can see, one of the factors about Maya Comet Pond that's very different about the other ponds that we open is that the watershed to pond ratio is much, much greater than the other systems. So all of the fresh water that people are using and is going into the ground in that area, all of the rain that falls within that red and then the blue to the west is going into the pond. So you'll see the salinity will actually decline very quickly. However, that might not, that might not help the situation in terms of the phosphorus. I can tell you that today, compared to last year around this time, the clarity and also the pH is very different than it was last year, which indicates that there's probably a bloom occurring currently. So moving to, I think Hummock is next in the, if that's okay with the salinity information. And Hummock Pond also receives a good amount of fresh water, and as we all know, the groundwater has been very high this year compared to, I don't know, what, the past 20 years?
Twenty-five year average.
The 25-year average. It's like a foot and a half to two feet higher. So Hummock Pond was actually very fresh as well. It was about one and a half parts per thousand. We're typically around this time of year is about five. So that's just from all of the precipitation we've been having. And so we don't have a value since it's still open. We typically take the value after it closes to get a kind of end point. We'll take the salinity before, and it was 1.5, and then after, we'll see, I'd imagine, because it has been open for a number of days, that the salinity will have increased quite a bit in this system. However, in terms of Sacagawea Pond, that's not the case, because it didn't, it wasn't... It had an, it basically only drained. I didn't, I go and look at the openings regularly while the channels opened, and I, I never saw basically very much water coming in from the ocean into the pond. I just saw a lot of water draining. So when we get the salinity values for that, I'd imagine they're probably not going to be much greater, but before the opening, they were about 12. And our goal for that system is 22, to protect water quality. So I'll be back for the water quality update to let you know what those endpoints are.
So I'll hop back in, just to give kind of a plug for the public forum again. Obviously, with all of these, our office have been receiving a lot of calls about flooded basements, water where we've never seen it before. And it was definitely not calls or locations exclusive to the Hummock Pond watershed, or Maya Comet Pond watershed, or Sacagawea Pond watershed. We are seeing kind of it island-wide. We're seeing it in Nantucket Harbor watershed, Matickett watershed, and some talks that we were about a foot and a half higher than our 25-year average for groundwater, which is something that's a pretty substantial uptick. And you would expect to see those areas. Anyone that travels around is probably seeing a lot of wetlands, especially in some of these watersheds, that are still very full, surface water that's there. We've had a very rainy winter, a lot of water around where we've seen it accumulate. But I think something that we're hoping, and one of the reasons why we included some of the watershed maps for these ponds, is one, to help people identify what watershed they're living in and where they're being affected by groundwater flow and where their groundwater is flowing to, whether it's to a pond or to the harbor, and figure out those areas. But I think we'd really like to have, as part of this pond management principle discussion, really talk to some of these affected neighborhoods. I mean, we've heard a lot from, you know, the folks that live down in the Mississauga neighborhood where they have issues with water, down in the area of hatches and bayberry commons and those areas that are connected to the Nantucket Harbor watershed. They've had a lot of issues with water over time and received a lot of comments from them about really buckling down and trying to figure out ways that we may be able to improve those neighborhoods, whether it's surface water or stormwater, or help them develop strategies in their homeowners groups to deal with excessive water when we come to it, and have, you know, pond openings as a tool, but really not the escape from doing the right thing and building up responsibly and managing those systems correctly. So that's kind of where hopefully we're headed.
Any questions for Jeff? Now, we, we were planning on having a forum in May, June, Libby?
We haven't scheduled a date yet. I, we've got to discuss it, but I'm hoping sometime in May.
That's where, that's going to be time for the public to come and really ask questions, give their opinions and figure out solutions.
I think we've been discussing doing that, where it's really focused in the time, having kind of a general forum, and if it's really necessary, especially during the summer, maybe even identifying specific watersheds to have kind of a follow-up forum to talk about something specific to each area, because they're all a little bit, they're all a little bit different, have their own little quirks for how they work and what functions and what level of development's already present in those areas. But I think we want to have a really interactive process to help guide to the best decisions for our ponds and using the water quality data that we've developed over the last 10 years to make better decisions about how we're affecting our watersheds.
Matt, you have a thought?
You could tell.
Looked like you had a thought.
No, I just, if we're going to do forums, I think those are great. I think that's a good thing. If there's stuff that comes out of these forums, if there's recommendations or actions, then they need to be put on a timeline and actually accomplished. There were, you know, there's some recommendations from 15 years ago, we didn't really follow. So, you know, and then we keep building and making it worse. So I think, you know, there's a point of talking, but then there's a point of action. If there's actions that come out, we should do it. Because I've been here on the board long enough that this comes up every spring, and it's a big issue, and then it kind of goes away, and it comes back up again in the spring. So if we can actually drive to some solutions or some helpful things, let's make sure that they're implemented.
Yeah, I think some of the timing, Matt, to answer that is driven by, we want to get them done early enough to get actionable items developed. So if we need to prioritize and take things to Finance Committee or Capital Committee, that we can have those ready for the start of the next, next budget cycle, so we can actually have measurable goals and accomplishable items.
And that would be amazing. Thank you.
Which is August, September. That's right around the corner.
Yeah.
It's going to be, going to be a push.
Yeah.
It all is.
I have a question. Do we have any information on change in land use over time?
Sure. So the, the last update and probably the most relevant piece to that, when we did the 2014 Maya Comet Pond update with Woodard and Curran, they looked at that pretty extensively. Nathan Porter at the Town GIS Office is, is really good at also developing those figures. And I think any discussion for those areas specifically is really going to have to look to see how that land use has changed. I mean, I don't think it's a big secret that the Maya Comet Pond watershed is, from its original starting in the water quality program to now, the amount of development in there has been pretty extreme. And I think getting that whole area up to, up to stuff is, is kind of a priority for, for that watershed.
And does that include impervious area of impervious surface or lawn area?
Yes, they, they can distinguish between all of the uses, whether it's just impervious, roadways, lawn areas, obviously wooded areas or shrubbed areas or different wetland areas. They're able to distinguish between all of those and really have some pretty specific land use calculations.
Excellent. Thanks.
Following that up, it's similar to Matickett, when, there should be some best practices that are adopted in these areas that would help some of this. And some of it isn't that expensive. But I, I do know my first house was out in the Austin Farms area, and, you know, it was basically built in the wetland, and the cellar would flood continually. It was only, you know, it was only a working, it was only had the utility cellar, really. And... And before we sold it, we finally solved it, but it was with a huge pump that this time of year would run for 24 hours a day. And we had, you know, a $500 electric bill from the pump. So I, you know, so some of this, you know, if I, if I had stayed in that house, I think what we probably would have done is, you know, and we put a big drain on the bottom and everything else, but we, you know, we may have just filled it in. I mean, it was, and now, and it's getting worse in some areas, not better. So...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'd like to equip homeowners and people looking to buy homes with the tools and the questions to ask about their homes and what to expect, and, you know, help out construction with, well, what really is the best practice for an area where you might have to de-water, you're close to groundwater? How can we set people up for success as much as possible, and knowing where, if you're going to pump your basement too, well, where are you putting the water that you're pumping it? You know, are you putting it in an area where it's just coming right back to your basement? Or are you putting in an area that's smart and not impacting others around you, or causing, you know, groundwater mounting in areas or things where it could infiltrate incorrectly?
Okay. Thank you. We are going to have a public forum in May or June, but there are some people who have been waiting for an hour and a half to speak. Mr. Reese, would you like to?
Thank you, Jason. I just want a brief overview. I've lived and worked on and near that pond for all my life so far. My parents originally bought a piece of property there in 1955, which is the edge of Odecomee Road. And they owned, and we presently own, all the way to where my house is, which is the end of the road. So I'm very familiar with I don't know why they've stopped the pond openings. It certainly makes for the pond in the middle of the summer, it's stagnant. I mean, you hardly see any birds in it. Through my life, when the pond has been opened, and there's only been one time that I can recall that it didn't shut on its own, you would see the springs, or you see the water from the higher ground levels coming into the pond, and all the sand on the edge of the pond would look like beach sand. But on account of the years that have passed, and it hasn't been rinsed, it is literally, it's like mud on the edge of the pond now, from this last We certainly have had a lot more rain this year than other years. And I have presently lived in that house, well, let's put it this way, the basement was in it 15 years ago. There never was water in the basement in that, in that 15 years. My parents' house is over 20 years old. Those basements never had water into them until this year. I mean, now we're worried about the mold from the sheet rock, et cetera, which, which are big, I mean, they're health issues that I think we need to look at what's going on with the birds and when we open them. Certainly through my lifetime, the type of fish that are in the pond, when the pond was being opened on a regular basis, when it needed to be. And now, it's the same, same type of fish that are there. I just have a problem with why, why we at least don't have some type of bound that tells the level of the pond. And when it gets extremely high, I've been fortunate, I mean, I had a survey, as my parents did, that set the height to the footings, and we were good until this year. Not the case in Miz and Mass. As far down as Mrs. Fisher's house on the corner of Pleasant Street and West Creek Road, her basement was flooded. But once the pond opened up, the water goes down. Pond Street in... Hazy Farm, right? Thank you. Water was there most of the winter, even though it's basically supposedly the Hummock Pond watershed area. When My Comet Pond was opened, four days later, the water was gone in the road, and the water, and the wetlands areas are lowered in that area. It affects a huge area, that My Comet Pond. I've monitored the water level in my, below my basement with a pipe for the last 15 years. And this year, it's just a little over 12, you know, you hear that the water level is a foot and a half to just under two foot higher in Nantucket. But the pond, the water level under my floor is, was, is 12 inches higher than it's ever been. So I'm just hoping that going forward, that we can, under certain circumstances, have that pond flushed again and open. Again, it affects a lot of people, not, not just me, but a lot of, all of Allen's Way, a lot of people of, it's a health issue with what's going on under their house.
Well, I hope you can come to the public forum. You've got a lot of institutional historic knowledge that's great with, speak with them.
Yes, I'll make a comment. So as a newbie, we just elected back in 2016, I got that call from Mrs. Fisher, who said her basement's flooded. I brought that as a, as a question to this board. We had Jeff come and speak to it, and the, and the gist of it was, oh, no, opening the pond wasn't going to affect that. So I'm, you know, I understand. So, but, because it seems like from what everybody says, it does have an impact. So I, I'm agreeing with you, but for some reason, back in 2016, there wasn't the willingness to consider opening it, and I'm not sure why. So...
One other comment that I'd like to make, Jason, is the fact that Phil Marks wasn't able to be on island today. But speaking for something that I've given a letter to the board about, he had an unusual situation with trying to deliver propane on the west side of My Comet. There was so much standing water there that the trucks, when he was trying to deliver propane, the drivers were nervous about driving to the houses on account of the water was so deep, you couldn't tell where the road was. And as you know, little kids like to jump in puddles. And when you get to be a teenager with a four-wheel-drive vehicle, you have to go through puddles faster, which makes the puddles deeper. And with ice and with puddles like that, God forbid, there was a fire, or there was an ambulance that had to go on the west side of My Comet Pond. And there was water standing on the tower road for a long period of time on My Comet Road also. So there's, there's a lot of concerns here that I think need to be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So Jeff, Jeff, do you remember that discussion?
If you go to page 57, we can answer, answer that.
Sure. So...
And show where the, where the, you know, show where the watershed is. Yeah.
So that specific question has come up a lot. And I will say, it is, it is always nice to get a lot of the institutional knowledge that's on island. When we had this watershed re-investigated in 2014, was to address a lot of these issues that are there. And I wish I would have provided the cross-section that was done of the island from My Comet Pond through to the creeks, that shows groundwater flow direction, and how that all works together, and the amount of water that it takes to kind of overcome that direction. And a lot of those areas are outside of that watershed. And they're relieved by Nantucket Harbor, and the levels in Nantucket Harbor, and the amount of groundwater that gets in. And undoubtedly, when those areas come up, that groundwater flow dynamic can change somewhat. But I think the watershed is, the delineation of that watershed, and the areas of influence on it are, are pretty well researched and pretty well put together. And the data that goes behind it, I think, is pretty clear. But I think it is something where I do agree with Mr. Reese. I mean, I think having that discussion about all of the management options and criteria to trigger certain events or other strategies that are there, is something that's really apt to the discussion of how we're going to be managing each of these watersheds.
Just broader.
Yeah. And basically, if you look at that, the red line going left, the scientists will tell you that the water flows back to the pond from that line to the left, and the islanders will tell you that there's a swale that runs from that line to the harbor. And so there's sort of two, sort of two theories on this. Anyway.
Thomas Barrett, West My Comet. I couldn't get out to my houses out there for two weeks. As Miles said, that water was up over the road. I've dealt with that road. I've dealt with water over that road for the last 25, 30 years. This was the worst it's ever been. And in the Woodward and Kern report that was issued, I think the one that he was referring to, they even said in their recommendation is to raise that road. As Miles said, fuel deliveries couldn't get out there. Harbor Fuel didn't fuel up my house out there, but they came back later. They couldn't do it in the first truck, but they came back with a different truck. The puddle in that turn, the pothole or puddle was literally a tank trap size, and I knew exactly where it was, so I was able to get around it after they let the water out a little bit. But I saw people go through there in a Ford Escape, and the water was almost up to the windshield. And luckily, they put it in reverse and backed out. But that is a huge issue over there, and we really do need to address it. And in regard to institutional knowledge of that pond, I would speak with Charlie Fisher, because he was telling me stories back in the, in the late 60s, when the Corps came down with D9 dozers and actually created the pond, and pushed the pond open, and basically did it in the summer. He said that he remembers as a kid being down there watching, and actually most of the people on island down there, watching them bulldozing that pond and widen it out. And he said, that's, the edge of the pond is basically all the mud and gunk that they pushed up to the sides. So that was a man-made pond. I mean, as far as institutional knowledge, I would speak with him.
Thank you. Mr. Ray? And then after this, I think we're going to try to wrap it up.
Thank you. My good friends, Miles and Marcia are here. We're going to argue this out, hopefully in a public hearing format, or at least a forum. We can do this as ladies and gentlemen, but there are definitely two sides to this, and this is going to be controversial. That pond is not routinely opened. Mr. Franzudo and myself decided, with a great deal of information from both Woods Hole Oceanographic and other studies, that there was no true benefit to the pond to open or close that pond on a routine basis. All it does, because of the elevation of the pond, is drain the pond. There is a minimal amount of influx of saltwater into that pond. What we are, as, and I know this, I'm a resident in the upper part of that pond, sometimes referred to as the ditch. It's a ditch now, certainly. We are now faced with a summer of muck and mud and mosquitoes, more so than we care to think about. But it's been done, and we're going to have to deal with it somehow. Perhaps the town should consider, if these openings are to be perpetuated, that they would get involved in mosquito control in this particular portion, and other issues. The avian population is alive and well and very healthy. My wife will attest to that. The fish are, the fish are the fish. We now have herring in the pond that came in on an upswing when the pond was opened. What implications that's going to have, we don't know. But again, this is going to be a controversial issue, and something that's going to have to be fetted out in a forum. And I'm very pleased that Jeff is, and town manager, has decided to, to open this up in a forum basis. And again, like I said, I will argue with my friends, and hopefully we will still remain friends. But it's, it's been a nightmare for us since the pond has been opened. We had a wonderful viable pond, and now we have a marsh. And my house is 125 to 130 feet from the edge of the pond. And I have a full basement, and never, ever has it been wet.
Before you leave, quick question. One of the recommendations from 12 years ago was some sort of sluice, sluiceway, or something you could open it and control it?
And yes, we looked at that. And we looked at that in great detail. We even talked to the Army Corps about that.
I remember that. Yeah.
And essentially, what the idea here is, is you either put in a sluiceway that you can control with gates, or you put a pump in the pond to pump over. And the problem arose, and Woods Hole Oceanographic put this up in a computer model for us. The siltation was so, so great that the pumps clogged within hours, and, and any form of gated opening to the pond filled and clogged within, within hours. They just could not maintain it. I believe that there is indeed a pump in that pond that they tried to go over the dunes with. And it was totally ineffectual. It silted up and just didn't work. Thank you.
If there's no one else that's dying to talk about this, and go to the forum with Jeff and Natural Resources Department, we'll, we'll move on. That's okay. Libby?
Okay. Next, we have fiscal '18 third quarter budget reports for the general fund, Wanacoma Water, Scotta Water, and Our Island Home.
Good evening. So I'm here to go over some of the brief highlights for the general fund for the third quarter. In the page three, we kind of gave you a brief summary of where we were in the third quarter this year compared to last year. We were a little bit down this year as opposed to last year. One of the reasons that we, and I think Julia, when she gave the second quarter, might have also highlighted this, because it would have impacted the second quarter due to the recent tax changes. We saw an increase in prepayments in property taxes, so that people could take advantage of the deductibility in '17 versus being in '18 and being exposed to the limit, the new limits under the new tax law. Expenditure side, we continue to work with departments. We're on track where we would expect to be. We certainly, during this next three-month period, we're on a much more rigorous review with them, weekly, sometimes daily, with departments, going over where they're at, POs that are open and covered, where we, where we think things are headed. I will point out just a couple of things on the revenue side. Motor vehicle excise tax is in line. The third quarter of our fiscal year is generally when the, in February, when the first commitment of motor vehicle excise tax goes out, which is why we generally see such a large number there. Just as a point of reference, last year, the first commitment, we mailed 18,037 excise, motor vehicle excise tax bills. This year, the first commitment was 18,350. So we have seen an increase of a little over 300 vehicles on the island this year. Everything else is pretty consistent. It is down, again, as I said, about 8%. But when you look at a year-to-date, quarter-over-quarter, year-to-date, or year-to-date-over-year-to-date, the nine months, we're up about 10%. So we're comfortable where we are in this nine-month period as opposed to just this three-month snapshot. And we feel we're tracking and trending correct good in a positive manner on the revenue side.
And what was the date that you sent the vehicles out? When does that go out?
It goes out, depending on when we get it from motor vehicle, from the Department of Motor R and V, it usually goes out in around February.
And so that's a number in February?
That's in February. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And that rings true. Every house represents two, every new house is two-point-something vehicles. So you look at two-point-something, you look what we have, you have 350 in February. You, we're going to add some as the season comes in, you know, so 500 new cars is, and at least cars won't be in there necessarily, because they're registered somewhere else a lot of times.
Well, they are if they're garaged here. It's anywhere that's, any, any vehicle that's principally garaged here. The second motor vehicle excise commitment, which just recently went out, I didn't bring it with me, is also typically the next largest one. Those two make up the bulk of all of the cars that are on the island on an annual basis that are principally garaged here. Expenditures are in line. Again, we, we talk consistently with all the departments. We talk with the school on a very regular basis about where we see things ending, we think will end on a very positive note. Again, this year on the expenditure side. One thing to note, which we probably have talked about a little bit, we are now seeing the impacts of the plan design changes that we made that were implemented late in the second quarter. We're beginning to see those on a month-over-month basis now. Again, we did have positive group, our general insurance cost based on the rebidding a year ago. We've been advised, based on the fact that this 2017 was one of the worst storm years in history, that we probably are going to see a little bit slightly larger impact than we had anticipated. But we still feel that it's for next year that we're still within range. So we'll end on a positive note this year.
And remind us, those plan changes are not going to last forever?
The plan design changes for health insurance will last...
Well, the savings are going to last...
The savings will last basically this year, and then it's factored into how we budget moving forward.
Right. That's my point, is that those, we can't expect that level of savings every year after year. We were going to get savings for a couple of years, and then it was going to go away. So...
But what it really amounts to is that this year, when you make the plan design changes, you get a large pickup of savings. And then in future years, you have what I like to call, instead of savings, is more cost avoidance because of those changes. So... Capital investments are consistent. Capital investments are consistent. Just added the, any changes in expenses for the last three months. We have not done any additional borrowing since this was presented for the second quarter. We will be going out in June for the last round of borrowing this fiscal year to deal with any rollovers of maturing bands or any permanent borrowings that we may need to do if any, or if any projects are going to be starting and need to have cash flow before the end of the year from the previous town, from the most recently completed town meeting. And again, we will be talking to Moody's. I don't anticipate because this is kind of a mid-cycle for us. I don't know that we'll have an upgrade. I think we'll stay at the AA1 with the positive outlook from them. But we do every time have all of our bonds rated. Investment activity was a little slow this last quarter. The Treasurer and I will be having a call with, through Morgan Stanley, just to kind of wrap up where we are, where we think we're going to be, and whether they recommend any investment changes to those accounts.
When you, with the calls, with the REIT agencies, I know when they've done their review, they, one of the risks they were concerned about was sea level rise and the impact of, you know, being an island. And we said, oh, don't worry, we've got it covered. And so are they asking questions about sewer breaks and things like that?
We do expect that they may ask a question about that. The call is actually on May 7. A lot of this call near the end of the year really is kind of just how we forecast the year to go. But we have been told to be prepared that that could be a question to ask about, you know, where we're at in the process, what happened. And we certainly are making substantial investment in upgrades and things within the sewer, even based on this last annual town meeting, so.
So that's a good thing. I mean, it shows that we were responsive.
Yes.
We put aside, you know, town meeting and the public approved dollars for capital infrastructure. And I think our point was that although the risk is there, we have the means to deal with it. And I think we've got a good case to show that we do.
And I think it was a very unfortunate incident, but it actually may be able to highlight to them how we can manage through these things with not degrading operations to an extreme extent, which has been our argument for the last few years since I've been here. So it will be a question, and we are prepared to answer it.
The OPEB down 3.18 for the first quarter?
Yep.
Is that, does that include any withdrawals or is that just the losses?
There's no withdrawals. That's just return right now. With, you know, one thing that I always like to caution people when we look at investment activity, especially with the OPEB, which is a very longer-term strategy because we have no plans to be withdrawing any money since it's at about $2 million, is we're going to have rises and falls within that as we go. We're taking a much longer-term view that we need it there in the next, when we're fully funded in that, not today or tomorrow. So that's why we can manage those risks a little bit easier and be a little, I won't say comfortable, but not as concerned with that investment happening, rising and falling like that. And then the Muni Watch, which everybody I know thoroughly enjoys looking at, it's been a great tool for us internally. There are some yellows up there, but it really is just a quarterly, it's just kind of a quarterly slowing. But we don't envision that it's going to last the full 12-month period considering we still are up about 10% year-over-year to this point. One thing I would like to kind of ask of the select board is that the last presentation, which I wasn't here for, there was kind of a request to modify the presentation in terms of quarter-to-quarter and things. And I'm hoping that by kind of splitting it out and showing a three-month aggregation and then the nine-month aggregation that that is what you were looking for?
That's good.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure so that, because what we will do is we'll start to roll that out to all the other funds as well. We just wanted to make sure.
Was it helpful to you?
Pardon me?
Is it helpful to you?
It is.
Okay.
It is, it's a different way to look at it. No, it is certainly, and we certainly want to make the presentation as usable to everyone else. So it's good that it's something that you guys like to see this way. So we'll roll it out to everyone at this point.
Fair amount of yellow.
There is.
Compared to what we've been seeing for the first five years.
I think maybe some of the parameters, but I also think that, you know, if you look at it on a, the period, we're still up 10% over last year, and some of those that are yellow rooms and meals taxes ahead of last year on a year-over-year basis. The same with motor vehicle excise and building permits. So there is some yellow, and yellow really just kind of gives us caution to look to see if there's anything we really need to be worried about. So, but it is something that we talk about quite frequently, so it is known to us.
Just pointing it out for the rest of us.
No, I agree. That's why we do this. Thank you.
Thanks.
Want to comment?
Good evening. Mark, we'll let Wanna Comet Water. I'd like to thank Brian and his staff. I've been a year in the position now. They've been a great help with all of this stuff, not just the quarterlies, but every question, they're always there to help. So for us, the third quarter, Wanna Comet, as you see on your sheet, we're about where we should be. Revenues are down about 5%. Some of that's through water sales and some is from connection fees. Believe it or not, the sewer, getting the word out during that emergency by DPW and this board and other groups to conserve water, we saw that happen. Even since the pipe has been fixed, we're still not seeing a big recovery, which isn't a bad thing. People are still saving water down there. So that's kind of where that was falling short. As far as the revenue from new services, we budgeted for 100 new connections this year. Over the winter, it was a tough winter. We didn't get a lot of new services in. We're at about 85 right now, so we still have three months, 85, 86. We still have three months to get those in, and I think we're going to get there. I think we had three or four today that came in.
I have a couple coming your way.
Yeah, so things are starting to pick up and break free. So that was down a little bit. Other than that, everything looks pretty solid. There's no other real issues. I know moving forward into the next quarter and into next year, we're probably going to see a little bump up in needing some more money in our professional services so we can take a look at a build-out analysis on how that affects our aquifer and what it means to our pumping and pumping equipment. We're getting numbers back now on some of that, some preliminary numbers, and we'll have a better handle on that, and we'll talk to Brian when we get those in. But we're in pretty good shape, and I think through the next, you know, two or three months, we should get right back up where we need to be. Sconset has been really quiet this winter. We're down about 8% in revenue out there in sales. And talking with some of the locals, the elders that are out there, it seems there's fewer and fewer people in Sconset on a year-round basis. The winter gets a lot quieter. I think we've done three new services so far this year out there. Last year, I think we did a total of seven. I know there's potential for some more out there, but it's pretty quiet in Sconset. We're hoping that, you know, irrigation companies and landscapers are getting started back up. People will start watering, and the revenues will start coming in for the next three months. And looking at our projections, we think we're going to be okay there. Again, there's not, not a lot to develop unless certain pieces are released. So there won't be a lot of, a lot of new service connections out there in the remaining quarter. And the only other items we had out there, Baxter Road, we've kind of put on hold, doing anything there until we figure out what's going to go on. But that's about it. Both departments are looking pretty good.
I also.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
I'm just going to tell you upfront if there's any questions because I came in right at the very end of the quarter. I might not know all there is to know about some of the numbers, but I could refer to Rachel. But here we go. Revenue's down 15% for the first nine months of this fiscal year in relation to the first three months, the first, I mean, excuse me, the first three quarters in relation to the first three quarters of '17. That's for three reasons. Our average daily census is down 13%. Well, 13% of that, 15% decrease was due to average daily census. First three quarters of '17, we ran an average daily census of 42. And the first three quarters of this year, we ran an average daily census of 35. And the other 2% to 3% of that 15% is due to our Medicaid rate was off a little bit in relation to the same timeframe of 2017 by about $7 per patient day. And we also saw a 5% swing in private pay census to Medicaid, so that's almost cuts that piece of revenue in half. I don't believe that the census woes initially are going to be a longstanding thing. I think that once some of the renovations and stuff are done, that we can free up some more beds, we might be able to get back up into the 40 range again, which would be a good thing. I know I've been getting a lot of calls, looking at people coming in, you know, in May, June, things like that, so that might help. And that might be the right timing where we have some beds available. Some good things in the revenue, though, even though the total revenue was down, are, even though our Medicaid rate first three quarters of '17 in relation to '18 was down $7, from Q2 '18 to Q3 '18, we're actually up over $1. So it's starting to go in the right direction. That's from a Medicaid standpoint. From a Medicare standpoint, our rate is actually up $16, $17 per day, which we work with, we contract with the company Harmony Healthcare Services that really looks at our documentation, which drives our revenue, to try to increase wherever we can, make sure we're capturing every dollar. I mean, it's all about documenting what we do for the residents, which is a lot, and it's a lot of good, which when we discuss the five-star ratings and everything, you'll see that. I mean, on the expense side, up 1% for the first three quarters in relation to the first three quarters of '17, primarily due to a couple of areas. We're 6% higher in medical insurance, $53,000, 11% higher in professional services. Some anomalies within the professional services, legal costs were up some. We had union negotiations, and then there's search, search costs for nurses and the administrator, whatever they are, it was worth it. So, and also the housing for a couple of our travel nurses. That kind of escalated things. I mean, on a whole, professional services are still, I think they're 60%, give or take 65%, which figuring with three quarters of the way through the year, you'd expect to be at the 75% threshold. So it's still under, but when you compare it to the first three quarters of '17, we're up about $44,000 over, but it's due to those anomalies. Another anomaly that I'm looking at is medical supplies. I think it might just be organic growth. It's up about 8% from the same timeframe, first three quarters in '17. I reviewed all of the purchases in this timeframe, and nothing looks out of place. Our census is down, so the normal thought process would be that they would be down also. But if acuity rises a little bit, that could cause a spike in them. It's, you're talking about a total of $6,000. And again, medical supplies in general is only at 61% for the first three quarters. But a spike when the census goes down, so I'm looking at that more. I mean, I'm working with the director of nurses to implement a better tracking system on the front side of the supplies. I mean, we have a good tracking system as far as an ordering process and a par level, but I think we need to work on the front end too, just to make sure some of this organic growth isn't by ill use, let's say. So we'll be implementing something where we'll be able to track everything that's going out of the stockroom from the get-go too, and, you know, just drilling down on some of those numbers. But in general, with revenue being down 15%, you'd expect that the expenses are down 15%. They're only down about 8%. But I know we're working on some things to really drill down on some of those outside of those anomalies we already discussed in professional services and medical insurance. And I think that's it. I mean, the only other trend that I have seen is getting back to the, on the revenue side, the private census. If you look at the fiscal year so far, there's been about a 33% decrease. First quarter of '18, we were averaging 330 days a month. We're down to 180 days a month. I don't necessarily believe that that's anything that's going to be like a sustained drop because it can fluctuate a lot from time to time, but it just, when you look at all nine months so far, it's a definite decrease, like a roller coaster going downhill. So, though, again, some of the inquiries we've had will probably help that if they convert to admissions.
For the camera, will you explain the difference in reimbursement for private versus Medicare versus Medicaid?
Sure, sure. Yeah, oh, absolutely. For private pay is literally room and board rate is paid privately out of someone's own pocket. Medicare and Medicaid, we bill.
And what is that, what is that per day now?
It's average $430 a day.
$430, yeah.
Yeah, which is, again, considerably less than an acute situation in the hospital, obviously. And then Medicare and Medicaid, Medicare is for skilled services, short-term rehab or skilled nursing services, and that reimbursement can range anywhere. The whole, there's 14 different categories, and it could be anywhere from $800, $900 a day down to $200 a day. Medicaid is, there's a series of rates within them too that could range from $140 a day up to $270 a day based on the acuity and the level of care we provide for them. I mean, if you look at the layout of the census broken up on 100% scale, typically, Medicaid is about 50 to 60%. In this realm, private pay is about 30%, and then you have Medicare. We run, I mean, just because of the flow of population, we don't typically do as healthy of a Medicare census as on the mainland just because we have only got one hospital, a small population.
Right.
Any questions that I hopefully can answer, otherwise defer?
I think the question that we were, would have asked, but you answered it in your presentation, was the, you know, the dip in census. Explain that.
Yeah, I mean, moving towards the Q3 with some of the construction going on, we had held beds out of service just to be able to move around and take things out of, you know, we don't want people, residents, having to deal with the construction and everything. I mean, we've done our best to try to minimally affect anything, but we do have some beds out of commission. Just like anything else, the minute they're out, then you all of a sudden start getting calls, and once the construction's underway, we can't just fabricate rooms. But there has been a couple of times, just since I've been on board for five weeks, that we've had to determine, you know, get four referrals. We'd love to take them all, but we only have two beds available. The construction that's underway now is, I guess it's going to be done by sometime in June, in which case then we'd have the ability to open up beds to get us back up to the 40 range potentially. And hopefully, you know, with the flow of referrals that we've been getting, if it continues, we should be able to attain that.
But the reality is, it's going to be, if you're dropping, you're at 65% of revenue at this point in the year. You should be at 75%. We'd be, it'd be very difficult. You know, we shouldn't expect that we're going to get hit that number.
Correct, correct. I mean, anything that we're going to see as far as the census growth to get us back to that probably won't really make a lot of difference for the last quarter of '18, but it definitely will to start off 19 in a good position.
Pretty good. Thank you, Brett.
Oh, wait a second, I'm still on board.
You don't get rid of them that easy.
I want to say thank you for that, for the Q3.
Okay, what's up next? I'm still on board for five-star ratings, yes. So since there wasn't any changes to the board, do you guys want me to go through the five-star rating again and how, I mean, you guys have been through it already, so do you have any questions about how it, like what factors into it? Or you want me to just jump ahead to the actual ratings and the breakdown? Are you good with that? Okay. So currently, we're rated as, our overall rating is three stars. So currently, we're rated as, our overall rating is three stars, which is down two from the previous quarter. The three criteria that make up that three star is health inspections. We were a three star, we are now a two star. Staffing, average, we were a five star, we're down to a three star. And there's reasons for that, but I'll get into that as we go through each one. And then quality measures, we're still a five star, and we were a five star. And ultimately, when you look at, if you were going to go on the five-star rating and determine, is this a good nursing home for my loved one? The first thing everybody looks at is the overall star rating. But when you get into the meat and potatoes of what makes it up, the quality indicators speak much more highly of the care that's provided and what we do for our residents, which we've maintained a five star, which is the highest rating for a while now. So that's a good thing. The decreases in health inspections. Now, if you looked at the breakdown of the health inspections, we're, if you want to skip to the next frame, there you go. Total number of health deficiencies were at five. Average number in Massachusetts is 4.9, in the United States, 5.8. So as you see, even though our two-star rating in health inspections is considered below average, the numbers indicate that we're pretty much right on top of the average. The reason why we're scoring out at below is when you look at the deficiencies, they run on a scope and severity. The lower scope and severity, B, C, D, E ones carry like a point. It's all about a point system, and they carry lower points. And then when you get up into the G, H, I, J tags, which mean there could be either actual harm or something like that, they carry a lot more points. So even though when you look at the number of tags were average, we're scoring below average because in our recent survey, we had a tag that carries higher points. So it kind of swung us into the, into the below-average range there. On a good note, they look, they look at a series of years, and the most recent one is much more highly weighted. So as next year comes around and we go through survey at the end of this coming year, in October, November, assuming we don't have any major tags like that, that will, that big tag that's hurting us now will have a lot less point value when we go through our next survey. So I'm hoping to get that back to where it'll pull up. And as long as we're, like I said, as long as we're scoring. Now, there's a factor in there with, there's a new survey process, which this past survey, our island home didn't go through, it didn't go into effect till the very end of November, which I, unfortunately, I was lucky enough to go through at my other facility before I moved over. Much more objective, which is a good thing and a bad thing. I think that days of deficiency-free surveys are, at least in the next few years, is not going to be nearly as frequent. It's just because of the objectivity. It's just a series of computer screens, and they answer yes or no based on what they find, and there's no subjectivity in it at all. And unfortunately, based on the answers they plug in, it just works their way right through. So far, what I've heard on the line is that the average number of deficiencies per building, albeit they're all minor deficiencies, has almost tripled. So, but I mean, in, I mean, relatively speaking, if everybody goes up threefold, then we'll still be average or better, depending on how we do. We're not going to get any worse. I'll assure you of that. So the next part is staffing. Again, staffing, we went from a five-star down to a three-star. So we went from above average down to average. It's all, the staffing piece is all based on RN staffing. What makes up the number is RN staffing, LPN staffing, CNA staffing, and then they pool it all together. But in relation to last quarter, our total number of licensed nurse staff per hour last quarter was at 1 hour 23 minutes per patient day. And we dropped to 1 hour and 10 minutes. That's not really actually a big drop in the whole scheme of things. But this is where it really hurt us, is RN hours. And dropped from last quarter, an average of 55 minutes per patient day, down to 24 minutes. So it dropped by over 50%. That's not because of anything other than, I think, we had an RN who retired. And when you're talking about a small population, even one RN retiring that comes off the, off the books, that's why it dropped. But in relation, it goes to show you, RN staffing is really heavily weighted in all this. LPN hours actually went up from 28 to 46 per patient day. And CNA hours went up from 3 hours 4 minutes to 3 hours 44 minutes. So even though we went up more in CNA and LPN hours from a staffing perspective, because of that drop in RN hours, it really, they're heavily weighted, and it really caused us to go down. And then physical therapy, we actually went up a minute per patient day, which that's another thing.
But your staffing is fairly fixed, so as your census goes down, you're going to have more, more man-hours per patient day?
Correct, correct.
And the 24 for RNs, those folks don't give a lot of direct patient care, or do?
No, no, most of the RNs do.
They do?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So this doesn't include the RNs that are like in an administrative role, or?
No, actually, all of the hours-
Like the educator?
The only ones that are ruled out on that is the director of nurses. Anybody below the director of nurse level, like a unit manager or a charge nurse or anything like that, from there on down, it's all factored in.
So those are in the 24 minutes?
Correct.
Okay. But I was trying to give you, you know, an out to say that, you know, in terms of, I mean, so much of your care is delivered by CNAs.
Right.
And not as much by RN. So the drop in the RN care may not be so, you know, seen so much in the direct care of patients because?
Well, right, right. I mean, and it's unfortunate that the formula they use so heavily weights RNs because, again, LPNs working on, can do 98% of the job that the RNs can do. And once you have several years' experience, which a lot of our nurses do, I would put an LPN up against an RN any day of the week, you know, once they're in the working world. I mean, from a training and education perspective, they might come out of the chute with a little bit more as an RN, you know, critical thinking skills and stuff. But once you're out there in the working world applying those critical thinking skills, a lot of times it can be a wash.
But to follow up on what Jim is saying, though. Here's, Jim, your comment initially was that if there's fewer people, there should be more hours per person. But we had fewer, we had fewer, a lower census, but we had lower hours per person as well.
For RNs, yes. For the other categories, actually.
But look at CNAs, CNAs.
Yeah. And remember, I mean, and not all of the increase in LPNs is probably due to just the decrease in census, so the percentages wiggle up. I mean, if an RN leaves, we have to fill it with someone. We're probably staffing it with an LPN, which is also part of the increase. I know from a, from a total hours perspective, it hasn't really budge much. The drop there was minimal, if any. But we're working on things. I mean, a lot of this data was through the full quarter, and I know we got a couple of travel nurses on board the end of March, or mid-March to the end of March. So that's going to help our staffing pattern, one of them being an RN.
How difficult is your hiring? I know you're new.
It's, well, it's difficult, but it's, I mean, as you know, there's a nursing shortage all over. The fact that we're on an isolated island as opposed to on the mainland just makes it a little bit more difficult. I honestly, it's, I think the approach is, the island has a lot to offer for a person at the right point of their life, you know, which is what drew me to it. And I think moving forward, as we look at hiring techniques, it, we have to approach it more not so much hiring as almost like marketing and cater to those people that would be at that point of their life that it would be an attractive option to come across. I've already kind of started putting things together on paper about ideas that we could do moving forward. On a good note, you know, with having travelers, if they end up liking it here, they could always convert to full-time staff. And, I mean, I know at least one of the two travelers we have on now is absolutely loving it here. So wink, wink. So that'll be a good thing, too, if that works out. So the last, the last of the three things is the quality measures. Just like with the staffing, our average daily census for the last quarter was 41.2. This time was 35.3. So some of the categories, we had five categories increase minimally. But when I looked at the data that feeds into it, the numbers didn't change any as far as denominators, numerators and denominators. So it's, I think it's just the denominator changed being 35 instead of 41. But the numerator, which would be how many patients in this category triggered for that specific thing, didn't change. So with all the increases, they're all like small percentages, which, based on the numbers within them, it's all because of the census drop in the denominator and the thing. But there are some good things that came out of it. We had six, six categories decrease even with the drop in census, which means those areas we had focused on, were working on, some of those areas are residents with urinary tract infections. We decreased even with the drop in census, our percentages with that decreased. Residents who self-report moderate severe pain, we dropped by 10.2%. So we're making great progress there. And these are areas typically that the last quarter, we actually scored up higher in that you'd want to look at it. The thing with the quality indicators is just because you're scoring high doesn't necessarily mean you're doing anything wrong. It could be just demographics of the population you have. But when you look at your data in comparison to the state and federal averages, it causes you to look and say, oh, something might be going wrong here. You look at the data, and then you can break it down and determine really if there is something wrong, or is it? And I'm happy to say that all of the three or four or five areas that I saw either increases in or were scoring above the averages, I sat with the nursing director and the charge nurse and broke them, broke every patient down to make sure that it's not something that we're either missing or not providing. And across the board, it's coming back that things are, we're handling things appropriately, it's just demographics of the population. And like, I'll give you, for residents who receive the antipsychotic medications, we scored, we saw an increase there. We saw an increase by like 2%. And in relation on the quality indicators, we're scoring at an 88%, which anything over 75% is cause to say, hey, we need to look at this. But the reason why we are is because we had, we go through a very active med reduction process, which we're required to do. And patients that were on these meds, we are obligated to try to decrease or get them off them. We did, and it failed, so we had to put them back on, which caused the number to go up when we put them back on. But that's the kind of thought process you have to go when you break down the data. So there's nothing that looks out of place here, and the fact that we're scoring a five on our quality indicators, which is the best you can get, is a better assurance to the fact that whatever our staffing is, we're getting things done the right way there because we couldn't get any better as far as our quality indicators. You bet.
Thank you. All right, on to Selectments Report's comments. Any committee reports?
I have a brief one in regards to the Windly sites. We had another, we had a meeting with, so it's myself, Lauren, Sinatra, Janet Schulte, and David Worth. We've been meeting with the various potential developers. And we met again with Vineyard Wind, or Vineyard Power, as it looks like Vineyard Wind is going to have the opportunity to bid on one of the two additional sites that are up for lease. So they already have the one, which is the one that we've had visuals for now, and they may have the opportunity. So we are discussing more of the community benefit agreement with them on that one. So there'll be more to come, as we're getting a lot more details on them. So more to come, but it was interesting.
I've got a good news, bad news.
Bad news first.
I'll give you good news first. You know, good, well, not, good news and medium news. National Grid, the parking lot, is going to be, we just learned that that's going to be in use again this summer. Working out the details. The bad news is it's absolutely not going to be next year. So are the medium news. So I kind of think that that gives us our timeline on when we need to get a parking system in place. And, you know, sort of end of the summer, have it figured out. Fall, do, fall, early winter be talking about it, January be implementing. And so that's sort of what I thought about it. I sent that to Libby and Jason, but I don't want, I just wanted to say that here.
And you're talking about Valley parking.
Well, the Valley parking will be available this summer. But then we've got to figure out a parking system.
I understand.
Because we're going to lose those 70 or 80 spots.
Right. I think it's more like a, I heard 100, in terms of our, looking at the needs analysis for the, I guess it was 70, and I thought it was more like 100. So, but I know that came as a real surprise to me, and we talked about it at a meeting or so. So I'm glad that National Grid, who's sensitive to the need to have a community benefit for their, as a utility. But I, you know, maybe we could discuss it now, I'd be happy to. So we, we need, we absolutely need a plan to replace Valley parking, I believe, for next year. Find a location, and I don't know if we need to bring that up as an agenda item, but I feel strongly that we can't just let that project lapse again. And we need to find a replacement for it. I don't know what other board members think about it. I know, it sounds like you're in agreement.
I'm not sure we're going to find, I'm not sure we need to find a replacement. If we, if we get in place a demand management system, and we're, you know, and we're working on demand management prills, then we're going to, we may have open spaces throughout the town, and we may find it's not as needed. You know, if we discourage people from parking for six or eight hours a day, and those spaces are, and the people are using alternatives, those spaces will open up. You know, so we, but we need to get on that.
So maybe we need to bring it back, because I, as long as it takes things to get developed on Nantucket, I think the likelihood of, I personally, you know. So I think we should have a discussion about Valley parking again.
I would agree, especially so that we don't, it doesn't happen three months before it's about to disappear again next year. So at least everyone is planning now. Matt, is that because, is that related to any of their construction being pushed back based on the presentation last week? Or how were they able to provide it this year?
I, I'm not sure. I just saw the letter.
Okay.
I have one other, if anyone else has anything?
Go ahead.
One other good one, letter to the editor. This was in the paper a few weeks ago, and this will make us realize we're doing pretty well. "The scrapping of the railroad has caused me to look backward. I remember when it came, for I did not want it to come. How we did kick about it and how we predicted all sorts of calamities. But it came, and now we are all sorry that it is leaving." So, you know, so we have a history of complaining about things and then like them when they're here. "How we tried to down the waterworks project, too, I remember it. I was one of those who hissed and hooted at Moses Joy's idea and claimed he could not make water run uphill, but he did. And the electric lights, remember how everybody was going to get shocked and be killed? How the streets were going to be strewn with dead birds? Now we could not get along without electric lights, and we are not now bucking against the coming of the automobile." So I just think that puts it, that's about 150 years ago. It puts things into perspective.
My small version of that is I was totally against the roundabout after the midnight on post office. I thought that was going to be the end of the world, because I worked in that area at the time. And now, now I love it. Now, it does work. It's not perfect, but it's better than what was there before. So that's my small version of that.
That's probably why you were elected chair. You fit in.
I had a capital program committee meeting. We met early to start planning now on how we're going to continue to implement the newer process that we put in. And so we're ready to go in August versus kind of clawing and trying to figure out the process in August and September. So we're going to meet, I think, you quote me if I'm wrong, Libby, maybe once a month throughout the summer? Or every, every other month, something like that? And then we're going to put a little more emphasis on looking at the 10-year projection of capital projects. That's my only report. Anything else? Their motion to adjourn?
Adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.